Good morning. I call to order the meeting for the Franklin County Board of Commissioners for Wednesday, April nineteenth.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Weymer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With me, Father, we come to you today, God. We seek your wisdom. We seek your guidance, God, instructions from you, Father, in everything that we deliberate upon this morning, God, that we would do it as the people's business, God, to better our county, to better our area and our state. God, for all the things that we look at today, God, we just ask for you to be with us, be with us in this meeting, God, and we give you the praise and the glory for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right. That brings us to correspondence and organizational business before we get on to our retirements. Derek, do you have anything from the...
I do not today, Cole.
All right. We have two retirements today, and first of which is Donald Sellins. He's a heavy equipment operator for sixteen years, and we would like to present him with a plaque as a small token of our appreciation for his service to the county. So if you come on down.
This plaque reads, "Appreciation and recognition for dedicated services of Franklin County, Kansas."
Right, Cleon? Picture be on the radio.
Our second retiree is David Vestal, also a heavy equipment operator. He was here for thirty-three years of service to the county. He's not here today, but we're going to make sure he gets his plaque, and nonetheless, we appreciate his dedicated service. It brings us to public comment. Do we have one?
Mm-hmm.
All right. "Citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes. The commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business. And public comment is not permitted in regards to personnel matters or pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date."
Norm Woogie?
Good morning. My name is Norman Woogie, Thirty-seven Ninety Pony Road. I appreciate each of you guys being civil this morning, even though I probably don't deserve it. But I came here to waste part of my life to say what I've said before. Here to tell you what you know or should know. You don't upset people that are required to reelect you. Another handful of people are upset. I was invited to visit with some people last night that are upset. If you guys follow the rules, it'll be better for everyone. Rules are set up that way. The issue is the road on Texas Road, just south of K-68 and about a quarter mile south. The bridge was made probably in the thirties, and I was showing that bridge. The bridge really doesn't have a bridge abutment on it. I suppose I've been around construction a little bit, combat engineers in the military, but it was made out of stone, laid up with stone, and the bridge, being built in the thirties, wasn't made for road traffic of heavy dump trucks fill the rock, and they are traveling at. Plus, while I was there, a semi went by with a couple thousand gallon tanks on it, really heavy. The bridge has fallen apart. I don't know if you guys probably aren't familiar with box covets. You probably are, but needs to have a box covert. Simple to make, reasonable, doesn't take long. In fact, I helped make the one on Keokuk down in Ottawa. I drove the road last evening and talked to the people, and the road is filled with potholes. It's not a minimum maintenance road, is it? It seems like it, and the road is very narrow. If two trucks, you'd want two feet on each side plus maybe four feet in the center, and it's just not there. It's just not a safe road. So someone needs to get out and look at that and see that the abutment is failing. Thank you very much.
Gene Hurt?
Good morning. Gene Hurt, One-O-Seven Jefferson Street, Pomona, Kansas. Why I'm up here is, is I want to know where we're at now with this hotel. Now, there was, they had mentioned that you're going to have to have another vote on this and on this transit gas tax with the city. So how far off are we for getting some kind of a decision made on this or what you're going to do with it? Don't know?
As you know, we don't discuss items this time. You can ask Derek. He'd be happy to help you during the week.
Okay. I'm going to, because, you know, that's the problem. You don't want people to know things, do you? That's not right. Waymire, that's not right at all, and you know better than that.
Longstanding policy.
See, but that's what I always mean. There's been a lot of longstanding policies that's been changed, Waymire, long before you came here. That's all I had.
All right. That brings us to consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda today would be approving the minutes for our April fifth meeting and our study session on the seventeenth. We have claim vouchers in the amount of six hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and six cents, a emergency vehicle permit application, and I believe that is it. Do you have any tax change orders? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I got one question. Who's the vehicle permit for? It's kind of a pot of me or what?
Pot of me and Richmond Fire District's David Cogler, Coger, K-O-G-E-R.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymer?
Yes. First item of business is to consider approving the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget narrative for Kansas Department of Corrections Adult Services. Allison Dickinson, the Community Corrections Director, is here.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Today, I am before you, asking for approval on two of our adult grants that we have that help fund both the personnel and operational and client services in our district, the fourth judicial district. The first one, I'm looking for approval of the comprehensive plan and budget in the amount of four hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and nine cents. This funding is provided by the Kansas Department of Corrections and, as I stated, sustains our office personnel, operations, and client services that we provide. Do you have any ongoing questions since our last study session about this item?
I think it was explained very well during the study session. Something to do every year, and you did say it was up a little bit from last year, correct?
Yes, we did have an increase. It's in the mid twenty thousands, and a lot of other districts, I know they sustained a, they've lost some money, and so I believe it has to do with the increase of the population that we're serving that helped them determine the amounts that we get.
Allison, this is for four counties. How do you determine the amount of money that goes to each county? Is it based on need for the number of people you have or what?
Yeah, so with our regular adult grant, how it's actually allocated is based on the, the allocation method is based upon the population of each county, but also the risk level of the client. So the higher the risk of the client, the more time we have to spend on interventions and in meeting with them and try to do cognitive programming. And so that, each officer, kind of, it's, each agency, for example, we have rent here. We have a contract for rent with each one of the counties, and so when it comes to the rent, there's a fixed amount, and we just have a percentage that goes to, from the adult account and then from the juvenile account.
Okay, so it's a weighted thing on each client, how their needs are. All right, great. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda item as stated on the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymer?
Yes. Second item of business also with Ally and the Community Corrections.
So the second item has to do with our fiscal year eighteen Behavioral Health Grant and our budget. I'm looking for approval today of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, ninety-six dollars and sixty cents. This grant is monies that are available to all the community correction in the state of Kansas, and it's from a pot of about three million dollars. Of that amount that we're requesting, it will help support two mental health clinicians that serve only our clients, those that are moderate and high-risk adults. They get individual therapy, diagnosis. Also, the monies help support mental health for adults as well that are in the other counties and maybe our mental health clinicians cannot support, and also helps fund for behavioral or batter's intervention course through Family Peace Initiative, which we have opened up for court services, which isn't funded necessarily through the Office of Judicial Administration, and then also our clients as well. So it's a great opportunity, not just for the clients that are under Kansas Department of Corrections, but also under Office of Judicial Administration.
All right. Any questions? We were able to discuss this quite a bit Monday as well. Is there a motion to approve the grant as it's presented on our agenda?
I have a motion. We approve the Behavioral Health Grant in the amount of one fifty-nine oh nine six, sixty cents.
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Weymer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Third item of business is for considering and possibly approving the creation and implementation of an Assistant Director position within the Franklin County Health Department. Leave Midge's here.
Sorry.
This is for the creation of the Assistant Director.
So we discussed that Monday about having an Assistant Director that would help with succession planning and also fill the gaps in a lot of the essential services that we provide and improving our health department, so...
This is a budget-neutral item, since we're moving him from a nursing director to an Assistant Health Department Director.
Essentially, yes.
Any other questions for Midge? Would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
I make a motion. We approve the implementation of an Assistant Director position.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Midge. Fourth item of...
Good luck with that hiring.
Fourth item of business is consider approving proposed changes to the current Franklin County pay ranges for classified positions.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We discussed this briefly on Monday in the study session. We have not moved our pay ranges since we had our classification and compensation study completed by the Austin Peters Group Incorporated in two thousand thirteen. In addition to that, we didn't do any kind of movement per se as a group for our organization in fourteen and or fifteen. Only select people or select positions had movement. So in two thousand sixteen, we attempted to bridge a little bit of the gap for not having made any of those changes in two thousand fourteen and fifteen, and again, this year, we're making some headway in that respect, but we've not moved the ranges. And in order to remain competitive, we do need to make some range movement, changes. I am proposing the two-point-one percent. It impacts about thirty-nine positions, of which some of those are Community Corrections positions and are not in our operating budget per se, and I estimate the cost of all of that to be around seventy-five hundred dollars. Any questions?
No, I just think it's important, you know, that employees are an asset. You invest so much time into them and training that keeping on that scale is really important. I make a motion that we approve that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item of business is our first quarter report of EMS activity.
Good morning, Commission.
Morning.
We're going to play catch-up this morning. January started off busy with three hundred and eighteen calls, averaged ten point two-six calls a day. Put us at seventy-seven calls above what we started out two thousand sixteen. We did have good deposits of a hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight forty. Adjustments of fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight seventy-eight. Sent fourteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-two cents to the state set-off. Six thousand, four hundred and nine eighty to Midwest Collections. I didn't get an extra zero in there for the bill. We billed more than fourteen thousand dollars. I'll get that for you in just a minute. We had move-up, we had twenty-two move-ups in January. If you go to the back page, it's got all the data on it. We did transport of that three hundred and eighteen, we transported two hundred and fifteen patients to hospitals, six patients back to nursing homes or residence. We had ninety-two standbys, classes, anything like that, seventy refusals, so our refusal rate was twenty-two percent. For February, we had a call volume of two hundred and fifty-four, which was a little bit lower than the previous year, bringing us to a total of five hundred and seventy-two calls for the year, which is up from two thousand sixteen by forty-five calls. Still had good deposits of ninety-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight ninety-four. Adjustments of sixty thousand, two hundred and sixteen seventy-two. We sent twelve thousand, ninety dollars and fifty-two cents to collections in the state set-off. Three thousand, twenty-two ninety-seven to Midwest Collections, and we billed a hundred and thirty-six thousand, forty-seven dollars and sixty cents, and we had fifteen move-ups. Again, looking at the back page, which is page five, we did transport a hundred and seventy patients. A hundred and eighteen of those patients did go to ransom. As you would notice, we're continuing to bring more and more patients to ransom. Since I've got the doctors and stuff, we are seeing a lot more of our patients coming here. We only took one back to a nursing home. We did have eighty-one refusal or standbys. Actually, there was fifty-five refusals for a twenty-one percent refusal rate, which is still really good from where we want to be. March was a busy month. We had three hundred and three calls, which is the same amount of calls we had in two thousand sixteen, leaving us up forty-five calls from two thousand sixteen. Good deposits yet again of ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-five fifteen. We did have adjustments of forty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-six oh nine. State set-off, we sent seventeen thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight forty-nine. Midwest Collections, we sent four thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven forty-nine. We did bill out one hundred and sixty-four thousand, eleven dollars and forty cents. Had a lot of move-ups in March. It seemed like every call came in on top of each other, so we were bringing Wellsville down here a lot, so we had forty-one move-ups in March. Jumping to page five, we did transport, transport two hundred and four of those calls. A hundred and forty-two of them went to ransom. We did transport six patients to nursing homes or residence. We had forty-six refusals, which is a fifteen percent refusal rate, which is one of the lowest ones we've had, so with having three hundred and three calls, we had a fifteen percent refusal rate, so most of those had some kind of attention to them. I have dealt with Dustin, and I know Randy asked me for those copies and stuff to be sent out. I do have a page on our website that all of our reports with the township numbers and that will be on that, so people can go look at it. The fire departments can go pull those numbers off that that they want instead of having to try to email them out and keep up with web address or email addresses. So are there any questions on the report that I can answer?
On your March data, for example, under your refusals or standby, you have a special charges. Can you give an example what those would be?
Special charges is what happens there is if we have a subpoena for a report, or if we have somebody come in to get a report, there's a print charge for that. So we have to put that in our system as a special charge, so we can keep track of the data. So anytime there's special charges, I start to invoice in the office.
Thank you.
I got a question on the move-up. You said Wellsville was down several times because you had other units out.
Yes, sir.
Does the unit that's stationed at the fire department, does it go out before a move-up call also comes in?
The way the move-ups work is, we get our first call in Ottawa or anywhere, the truck will go out from the city. So it's in Pomona. The north fire truck, the north station will go to Pomona. We get a second call, let's say it's in town. Wellsville will move up to Tennessee-Nine-Thirty-Five, because they're in town. Chances are, they're going to be back to the hospital pretty quick. If, let's say, we get one in Pomona and one in Richmond, that Wellsville truck will move up to Ottawa, so we're running from the center of Ottawa. But both trucks have to be out on calls in Ottawa before we do a move-up. And it's what we've been doing since we do have the division chief and finally hit full staffing. We haven't been doing move-ups between eight to five. Myself, Kristi, or Darren will jump on a truck with the captain to cover those. So some of those calls where we did have move-ups, that was our fourth-out truck. So, but like I said, for some reason in March, if you looked at the scanner, we'd get a call, we'd get one on top of it. We did have at one time four transfers holding from ransom, and that's starting to become more and more of a thing. About five o'clock, for some reason, we're pounding transfers on. So different things we've been looking at.
Is the remount scheduled yet to do that?
Yes, the remount leaves on Friday before Mother's Day weekend, so I think it goes back, and we should have it back in August.
Any questions for Nick? We would need a vote to accept the January, February, March reports and approve the adjustments and the amount sent to state, set-off and collections as stated in the financial reports for those three months.
The January report would be, what's the total amount billed then? Would be what?
The... The billed part of it, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
I'm going to have, I'm guessing it's going to be a hundred and forty-nine thousand, but I didn't bring that paperwork over with me because I had so much of it. But we don't approve that. The only thing we approve is the write-offs and the adjustments. That's just information that I'd be happy to get to you.
Imagine I could total up those five lines?
What's that?
So we have the five lines. We just have to total it up. So we could figure it up here if we needed?
Actually, it's not going to be those. I will, like I said, the bill, I don't know where I found it, but I usually bring all those with me, but I didn't grab it.
Fine.
If you want, I can have it back to you by the end of the meeting.
Is there a motion to approve, accept the reports for three months, approve the write-offs and adjustments for January, February, and March for the ambulance department?
Make the motion.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Well, I'd make a, it's hard to approve something when what we're looking at's not correct, so...
If you, like I said, if you would like...
We're not approving the report. Are we approving the report or just the write-offs?
Write-offs. The only thing you guys approve is the adjustment report and the write-offs. You don't approve anything else in it. Your stuff is just information for you.
That part of it, I vote yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Weymer?
Yes.
And the amount you gave us are correct. It's just not a totaled amount at the bottom. So we have the information.
Well, the billed amount is different, because what happens with your revenue amount, that could be for the last, depends on when that money comes in. The adjustment report's separate from it. Like I said, I don't know how to delete it off of there, but I will, if you want me to, get that back to you before the end of the day, so you guys can have that. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Nick. Next item of business is consider approval of awarding bid for the two thousand seventeen Chip Seal Project.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
You approved soliciting bids for the two thousand seventeen Chip Seal Project at your March twenty-second meeting. We mailed out four bid packets to people who had bid this type of work in the past. Two bids were received, and they were opened by Janet and I in her office on the eleventh. The little bidder is from Vance Brothers of Kansas City, Missouri, and their request is a motion awarding a bid for the two thousand seventeen Chip Seal Project to Vance Brothers for CML cover material in the amount of six hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty cents.
Seems lower, quite a bit lower than last year's. How many miles are you actually doing this year?
Forty-one.
Forty-one. We played catch-up last year. Did we have some extra miles last year from the year before?
It's just quite a bit lower. I think it was around a million.
It's a five-year rotation. We have two hundred and six miles of hard surface road. So this is what a five-year average would result in. It's in the northwest part of the county, includes Old Fifty-Nine.
As far as what time of the year did we?
We're going to encourage them to do it in the hotter part of the summer.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Vance Brothers bid on Chip Seal Project.
Second.
Material that you're going with is the...
Is the lightweight material?
Yeah.
The same material we've used for the past several years?
I'll second the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Resulting in many fewer complaints than when we were using the limestone?
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Seventh item of business is also with the Public Works Department, uh consider waiving the purchasing policy and contracting with Ace Pipe Cleaning.
Between crossroad pipes under Virginia Road, just north of the railroad tracks, North Elaine, are exhibiting evidence of a partial failure. Several vendors have examined the pipes and given, in at least two cases, a cost estimate. And we believe the system used by Ace Pipe Cleaning is the best repair method available to us. The repair involves a rotating spray similar to shot creating that will deposit at least a two-inch coating of cement of eight thousand PSI concrete to the interior of both pipes, producing a structural repair. Their request is a motion waiving the purchasing policy, since this is a repair, it's quite diff- difficult to find two vendors that are using the same method. And contracting with Ace Pipe Cleaning, who is the local representative for this method to line two fifty-four inch crossroad pipes under Virginia Road.
The other school of thought would be to sleeve it and then pump in a slurry?
No, we had uh snap tight down uh just the uh just the two pipes was in the range of sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars. That doesn't include whatever we would uh use to stabilize the pipe. After we got it in there, it would be very labor-intensive for our people. In the case of Ace Pipe, they come in, they do it, they go away. We re, we're required to provide them a, an area to work from and water. Which we can do with a water truck. In the case of In situ form, which was the first firm I contacted to uh use cured and placed lining for the two pipes, was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
That'd be the resin epoxy?
Yes. Felt resin epoxy. Hot water to cause it to set and
Same thing you would do to inside of sewer pipe?
Yes, sir. And has been done several locations here in Ottawa.
Any questions for Jim? Anyone like to uh make a motion to waive the purchasing policy and contract with Ace Pipe cleaning, cleaning for this service? The amount is ninety-two thousand, four hundred dollars. Is there a motion?
Well, it sounds, it sounds expensive, but it looks like it's at least half price of replacing them, so I'll make a motion to approve this process.
Second?
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Next item of business is to consider approving setting a public hearing for May third to vacate Douglas Roads between, Douglas Road between Oregon and Tennessee roads.
The department has received a request from all of the property owners adjacent to the aforementioned road. Requesting the road be vacated. In order to vacate a road, it's necessary to hold a public hearing. Their request is a motion setting a public hearing for May third. We will notify the same property owners by registered mail. Advising them the fact that we will be holding a public hearing. At that public hearing, if you decide to va- vacate the road, there will be a resolution prepared that accomplishes that. Which will subsequently be published in the county's official paper.
So uh, at this point, we're just deciding whether or not to set a public hearing, public hearing will decide whether or not the road should be vacated.
Yes, sir.
Chair Weymeyer, we do have a public comment on this item.
Alright.
Gene?
Gene Hurt, one oh seven Jefferson Street, Pomona. I received a phone call yesterday, late afternoon, from a gentleman that wants to make sure and these things have happened before, for people, people come and ask me to bring this forth, but putting the commissioner on items like this. And he wants to make sure that the hearing, if you approve the hearing, that that everybody is notified for the landowners that own the land out there. Now, I looked at the internet. I see the names there, I know the people in that area on the east side of Franklin County. And I don't see his name there, okay, so what he wants, and make sure, and I do, is if you approve this, that everybody be notified that needs to be notified of this hearing on May third. That's all I got, that's all I got.
Yes, an answer to that comment, all property owners will be notified by certified mail of the public hearing to be held.
Pursuant to Kansas statute.
According to the law.
Now, the request to set a uh hearing is signed, is that signed by all the adjoining landowners?
According to the map of the appraiser's office, yes, sir.
Road passable now?
It's a minimum maintenance road.
But it is open?
I believe the intent is to gate it on both ends and prevent youthful drivers from going in after a rain and tearing it up.
Alright. You say youthful drivers? Any reasons you could think of, you advise us not to set a public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion, any other questions for Jim again? Our motion to set, approve setting the public hearing for May third, twenty seventeen. So move.
Second?
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renode?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thanks Jim. Ninth item of business is to discuss uh finalizing the community partners' funding for twenty eighteen. This has Janet's name on it.
Yep. Um, so we have reviewed the information that you guys submitted after we had all of our community partners and um come and present to us, and you can see all of that reflected in the charts that we had attached to the agenda. Um, the first chart just reflects what the, what the partners had been funded at, and then what their new requests were for the twenty eighteen budget year. Um, their increase uh percent, by percentage between seventeen and eighteen was four point nine percent. Um, if we accepted their proposals at their, at their full amount. Um, so last year, you guys considered um this by method of an average vote, and we wanted to present this to you guys in a little bit different uh method, so you guys could actually discuss this, and it wasn't just presented in one method and accepted. So, the first method that um I prepared to present to you was the majority vote. And you can see the responses that we got back from each of you, I know you each presented your, provided your responses to us individually um without discussing with each other, so that is reflected in this chart, what each of you submitted for each of the partners. Um, and then you can see over to the side in the green column is a majority vote, so we took the most common answer and put that into a chart. And so you can see that resulted in the community partners being funded at seven hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and four dollars. Um, which is one thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars over what was funded last year. And that also includes CASA being funded at two thousand, which is, which is a new partner. Um, and then we wanted to provide the same method that you saw last year, so if you wanted to compare and contrast that, so if you look on the second chart in the green column, we use the averaged amount. And the uh difference is, you know, if, if one of you came in really low or really high, then, you know, it could skew the results one way or another, so you can see that the averaged amount came out to a total of seven hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. Um, and just one to point out to you, uh, on the CASA two thousand dollars was the majority vote, three of you said CASA should be funded at two thousand dollars, but when we use the average method, it comes out to twenty-eight hundred dollars. So we just wanted to give you guys a starting point, you know, something for you guys to talk about if you guys like the majority vote method, I mean, which is generally how we vote on things, the majority wins. Um, or if you like the average vote, you can certainly use one of those charts, but we really just wanted to provide these as a jumping off point for you guys to discuss these, and, you know, feel free to discuss this and let us know where you guys would like to go and what you would like to see in the twenty eighteen budget.
That was very helpful information.
And if I can add to that, um and this is just my recommendation, we included the average method in here solely because it's what you did last year, I don't particularly agree with that method, because we don't use it in any other capacity. And it basically ends up in an amount that none of you actually voted to do originally, or I guess you didn't vote, but decided to do originally, so um of the two methods in front of you, I, I think the majority vote is more consistent with what you've, you do on everything else, so something to keep in.
Like I said, we're not, we're not firm on either one of these methods, and this is a decision for you guys to make as a board. By no means are we going to provide a chart and then say, this is what you're gonna do, we want you guys to um let us know what, what you would like to see in the budget for twenty eighteen.
It worked out this year, luckily, you had three people choose the same number on every item, but CASA, for instance, requested four thousand, if somebody proposed zero, one thousand, two thousand, I mean, there would be no.
Right.
Well, personally, I like the majority a lot better than the average, I didn't
Well, I, it makes a lot more sense, because like you said, one person can really skew the whole thing by being either pro or anti, either way, or feels unjustified or justified, whatever it might be, so I would agree with Rick, uh, it worked out this time, it may not always work for us, but gotta decide something different, but I, I would lean that way too.
Not a huge difference in the total amount between the two.
The only thing I might bring up on this, and I don't think it's necessary on this one, because like Cole just said, we're, we're pretty close on this, and it worked out pretty well. I could see maybe in the future, after we each one do our numbers on this, that we meet and talk about it and discuss why we reached that number, I'm just for an example, you know, on one of these items, service for the elderly, for instance, um I come in higher than a couple others, and to just discuss amongst ourselves why, here's why I think, why my numbers are here.
That's exactly what this item is on the agenda for, so this is that meeting to have those discussions.
To discuss each one at a time, why we came up with the numbers we came up with?
Absolutely.
Why we're here, our backs aren't against the wall for any time limit, or I mean
Right, we wanted to bring this to you guys in a timely fashion, so you guys have time to discuss, and if you feel like you need more information, you know, if one of you, you know, went really high on so- something higher, significantly higher than others on it, you know, if you want to bring that partner back and ask some questions, or you want us to reach out to them and get some more information for you guys, we want you guys to feel like you have plenty of time to make that happen, so uh, I mean, if we can't arrive at a decision today, you know, but we need to get you more information, then that's the direction that we want to be moving on this, we would like to know, so we can move forward with all the other budget decisions that you guys have to make.
Add to that, Rick, um, that's exactly what Janet is getting at when she says that, you know, these charts aren't meant to try and box the board in in any way, shape, or form, it's just to start discussion, so by all means, um, let's have that discussion.
Alright. Will? I guess logical way to do it, unless you have a better uh way, would just be to go through the organizations one by one and I guess we could start with ma- majority vote as a kind of a baseline, and then if anyone has a uh, a reason or uh to, to depart from that, uh, speak up. The first one's the Historical Society, they requested seventy-one thousand, six hundred seventy-one thousand.
They had received seventy-one thousand, six hundred dollars uh last for, for the current budget year that we're in, and um, the agency request came across as seventy-one thousand, when Deb was here, she did mention that she thought she requested seventy-one six, but you guys had the paperwork right in front of you, she only requested seventy-one thousand.
Okay, well, I was under the impression she was requesting seventy-one six, so uh, but the paperwork stated seventy-one, I'd
Yep.
Be happy to be at seventy-one, which is what the majority vote is, anybody else wanna?
No, I thought she made it very clear that that, I mean, not the number, but whatever her number was, she was saying that was fine with them, that's all they needed, they didn't need more or whatever else, that's why I that was that number, yeah.
Good to know. Rick, you're the only other one that was a seventy-one, six hundred, with me, did you have anything to add?
No, I think I had the same situation you did, I thought it was seventy-one, six.
Little confusion on that matter, I guess, but uh seventy-one uh appears to be the consensus. Next one's the Perry Paws Animal Shelter, their two thousand eighteen agency request was forty-two thousand, the majority vote was uh forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. There, I believe they cited uh just rising operational costs as their justification for the requested increase amount.
I think the reason I went high on that one was just simply because of the uh improvement in their management and what the, what they're, you know, they're doing, I feel like they're not wasting, they're, they're really performing a a service, but certainly I, I have no problem with the resulting numbers that are in there.
Alright.
I kinda wanted to see them become a little more self-sufficient, I know that uh when you look at their numbers, they, they do a really good job, but they are also a really more of a regional facility. And I don't see a lot of reg- regional funding, and uh that's kind of where I was, I personally wanted to see them reach out more regionally. To achieve their funding.
I was surprised at the number of intakes from outside the county, it, it is huge.
Here's our proportion dwindles a little every year, so last year, they did receive forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, which I imagine is where that majority vote name, number came from. Here's, there's a consensus to say at the forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six.
I'm good with that.
Alright. Next uh COF, COF requested ninety-five thousand, the majority vote was ninety-five thousand, they requested ninety-five thousand for last several years, I can look it up, but uh, anyone have any problems staying with that?
All, all five of you said ninety-five thousand, they did not ask for an increase.
Sure.
So.
Only based on the fact that that's only what they requested.
Uh, next is the Conservation, Franklin County Conservation. Agency request was forty-six thousand dollars, the majority vote was forty-five. Last year, they received forty-four thousand seven hundred and five dollars.
Here's one that's a little, a little off. I mean, we're not on exact numbers. We've got two in a forty-five and one in a forty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty. And then we show a majority vote of, uh, of, uh, forty-five.
And I think that's just meant to indicate that more, a majority is a bit of a misnomer. But more of you, two of you had forty-five and the other had some random amount, which is.
The mode would be inaccurate, uh.
Yeah.
Not the, not the median.
For not, for not confusing math terms. We debated that, whether to throw a confusing math term at everyone.
Mean, median mode?
Yes.
Uh, you're only seventeen dollars off the average. The average is forty-five, zero, seventeen something. So, you know, you're right, right, right on with that.
You are, and you guys were all, you know, fairly close right in there. One slightly higher than forty-five, two slightly lower than forty-five, so.
And you'll see the same thing when we move down to FCDC. That, I believe, probably is an average because I'm not sure. I think you all had a slightly different amount on that, so.
I was, I put the same amount as last year. I believe Roy was slightly below what they had last year. Did you have any insight on that, Roy, as far as why you wanted it?
Well, I based all my numbers on the fact that, uh, this is all public money. And we don't know for sure what our budget, uh, needs are gonna be for next year. And, uh, we're using public money to, for our partners here. Uh, I was really reluctant to, uh, fund them, but the increases several of them wanted, uh, for next year. So I was real conservative on the numbers I put down.
And I think, and, and with that segue, um, it needs to be said, um, we are now under a tax lid. And we believe that tax lid is gonna be one point four percent. Um, if you look at the, uh, average of the increases, it's four point nine percent. So if we were to give these organizations everything they ask for, we're gonna have to make cuts from our own organization in order to do that. Um, and, and we're just, while we're still putting the budget together, um, we're not gonna be in a position, it's not looking like to where we can do that. In fact, we're about halfway through all of our budget meetings. And we're asking our electeds and department heads to keep it flat. And thus far, to their credit, they are all, uh, willing to do that and do what's best for the organization. So I think it needs to be stated publicly that, uh, the amounts that you all end up allocating to these organizations is not a reflection of, you, you, I'm sure you would love to give them the full amount of their request, but we just are unable to do that. And it's getting to a point where it might be literally impossible to do that with the tax lid now in place, so.
I think that's kind of, you know, when you go to the bottom one at CASA, that's why they weren't on our list before. And I know that they asked for the four thousand and I thought we're, we're housing them. So that's kind of an equivalent in, in, in kind, a contribution in kind. But I, I do think they need to be funded at some point. But that's why I came up with the two thousand for them, knowing that we've got a lid that, that we're gonna have to operate under.
Back on the Conservation District, is everyone okay with forty-five?
Yeah.
Uh, FCDC requested seventy thousand. Majority vote came out as sixty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Last year, they received sixty-four thousand seventy-five dollars.
What was last year's again?
Sixty-four thousand seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
Anyone wanna depart from that number?
Well, let's see, there was one, one that had last year's. And one, two below last year's. I would not be opposed to going with last year's amount, but you're talking three hundred dollars. But I think last year's amount would be more significant because it's a little bit skewed with only the one that was, which was mine, was high there, so that's, I, I, we're gonna make a change.
I'd just like to add that I believe when you guys approved FCD's contract last week, I believe because of, um, a discussion between the city of Ottawa and, um, and Derek, I believe we signed the contract for sixty-four thousand three seventy-five for twenty-seventeen.
Okay.
So that is.
For the three hundred dollars, maybe not, it would be worth the trouble.
Higher, yes.
Right.
So.
Okay.
So that is what we're funding them at for twenty-seventeen. Just because we always fund them at the same level as the city of Ottawa. And it's my understanding that we had said sixty-four thousand seventy-five dollars. City of Ottawa maybe had went a little more than that. So we kinda met somewhere in the middle there to fund them at the same level. So sixty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-five is the number that we signed for twenty-seventeen.
Not twenty-eighteen, but twenty-seventeen.
The twenty-seventeen, so.
Agricultural Society, uh, requested twenty-six thousand. Last year, they received, I believe it was seventeen thousand. And the majority vote came out to seventeen thousand two hundred and ten dollars.
And that is what they were funded at last year.
Essentially, they were at seventeen last year, when I looked at it, wasn't it?
Seventeen thousand two hundred and ten dollars.
Oh, okay.
And I, and I will let you know that, uh, four thousand dollars is coming out of transient guest tax to, um, to supplement that seventeen thousand dollars. So actually, the tax revenue that you're levying for that would be thirteen thousand two hundred and ten dollars. And then four thousand dollars is coming from transient guest tax for that.
And what's the four thousand in TGT funds designed to cover?
Well, the thought from the board previously was that the fair is a tourism event that brings people to the community. And so, um, providing a little bit of revenue from the TGT account would.
It's a qualifying expense.
Would qualify, yes.
Is there any, uh, desire on the board to depart from the majority amount?
I'm good with that.
Anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Elizabeth Layton Center. Uh, the agency request was a hundred and seventy-five thousand. The majority of vote was seventy-two thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars. Scroll up, but last year, it shows they, uh, received a hundred and seventy-two thousand three hundred and thirteen dollars. This would be a slight decrease, is that correct?
It's the same amount you gave them last year.
Same amount, yeah.
I'm sorry, I keep going up and down and I lose numbers. Alright, it's the same as last year.
Yeah, we had two of you said the same amount. Um, Commissioner Dunn was lower. I believe he came in at the twenty-sixteen amount, uh, for ELC. And then we had, um, one seventy-three and one seventy-five also.
I'm good with the majority.
Anyone else? Alright. I think this is the Services for Elderly. Requested two hundred and thirteen thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The majority, uh, vote was a hundred and ninety-eight, one hundred and forty dollars. Do you have that last year's number in front of you?
One ninety-eight, one thirty-nine.
Essentially flat.
And that could, it could go either way. I mean, we had one, one ninety-eight, one thirty-nine, and one ninety-eight, one forty. So they were right there together. So we just put it down as one ninety-eight, one forty. Which actually, the twenty-sixteen amount was one ninety-eight, one forty. They went down one dollar from sixteen to seventeen. So one of you put the sixteen number, one of you put the seventeen number. So it's one dollar either way.
And one of the reasons I was high on that was that, uh, I think the, uh, state funding was the questionable part of, or federal funding, state funding, what programs were going to be there and whether or not they were gonna continue to reach some of those funds. But I also understand the tax lid situation that we're in, that regards what we wanna do is what we can do and what, what financially fiscal to do, so, but that's the reason I was up there.
Well, I was up there. I recommended the five thousand dollars of what they request, again, fifteen thousand. And I had put down a five thousand dollar raise. And I still think that, uh, they need more than where they've been back in two thousand sixteen. Costs are going up for them. As they stated, they have drivers making very small amount of money and haven't had a raise in years. Um, I think it's very important that we take care of our elderly in the county and, and, uh, make sure they all have food and they're treated right. And I think that, uh, it's tough for these people to operate on what they're getting. And, uh, that's why I put down for a five thousand dollar additional to what they, on their request. Or not addition, but five thousand of their fifteen thousand they requested.
Voted, I, my input was to say the same based on the fact that, you know, fuel's considerably cheaper than it was in two thousand eleven, when they received a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. And, uh, there'd be substantial savings there, they're enjoying there. And, uh, I guess the part of, about federal funding and state funding, um, it's unfortunate, they don't see the value in putting their resources there, but we simply do not have the resources or, uh, ability to fill that gap. Uh, if we pursue a policy of, you know, filling in the gap where the federal government or, uh, state government decides not to put resources, it's just not, it's not an option for us. It's not sustainable.
What was our last year of funding?
It was one ninety-eight, one thirty-nine.
Ninety-eight.
Well, the majority amount is a hundred and ninety-eight, one forty, which is essentially flat. Guess since I've asked the question on every other line, is there, uh, uh, a will to depart from that?
No, I, I'm not gonna. The other three though, were all three higher than the majority. Uh, so two of the five voted that number, three of them were higher than that. But one of them was just barely higher than that at one ninety-nine. And I don't know if anybody wants up to one ninety-nine, but that would be another seven or eight hundred dollars more, but it would. Cause I'm sure the average was a lot higher because of, obviously, Rick and I were way up there, but, yeah. But, uh, it would be, it would be very significant, but yet it wasn't like it was two below, one higher than the majority. Majority having to be the two lowest numbers.
It would be something.
Yeah, I mean, that's just my thought.
So are you requesting we depart from the majority amount, or?
That's what I'm saying. If we went to the one ninety-nine.
So I will tell you, the average amount is two hundred thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty cents.
Yeah, and, and I, and I, maybe we don't wanna go that high. What I'm just saying is that the majority is only two people. And the two people are all both lower. It's not like that one of the other three was higher and lower, which would make the majority, I would stick with the majority of two. The majority of two are the two lowest numbers. That's why I was just saying, if I was gonna deviate, that'd be my reason to deviate it. Going to one ninety-nine, which was one of those three higher, is only another eight hundred and sixty bucks, but. I'll live with whatever you want.
Back to those accounting terms, the mode, most common number used was the one ninety-eight, one forty.
I don't disagree with that.
The median, the middle number out of the five was one ninety-nine. And the average was two hundred and sixty-six.
Right.
So, uh, a hundred and ninety-nine's been thrown out there. Would anybody like to, uh, I guess thoughts as far as one ninety-nine or stick with the majority?
Well, I'd rather go with the one ninety-nine. That's giving them something. I mean, uh, it's not a lot, but it's, it's something. And, uh, and the, the issue with keeping them flat, I mean, we didn't keep FC, uh, the FCDC flat. We didn't raise them much, but I think this is more important that they get a little bit extra than the FCDC was.
Anyone over here?
I'm gonna be alright, one ninety-nine.
You okay with one ninety-nine, one ninety-nine? We have a compromise. That brings us to CASA. The request was four thousand. This is a new request. We currently do provide in-kind, uh, we house their office. The majority number was two thousand. As I recall, um, they did, uh, include what we do in-kind for the rent. Um, they took that amount out of what other counties are contributing to, to make this request.
I don't know that for sure, but I, uh, the other counties are contributing significant amounts to it, if I remember right. Um, Anderson and Coffey County were four or five thousand dollars each. And as she stated in her presentation, a large majority of their clients are coming from this commu- this county. Uh, I think she said something near eighty-five percent of her, of her base were coming from Franklin County, so.
If I recall, how this went was she, her request for four thousand was consistent with what other counties are giving. Um, and the rent that we are waiving, um, is meant to, I mean, that's meant to offset the increased amount of people that we see. So instead of asking for more money because we see eighty-five percent or they are Franklin Countyans, um, she just asked for the same and let the rent make up that difference.
Yes.
Majority amount was two thousand. State Fair, I'll ask the same question I've asked all the others, there a will to depart from that majority amount?
I think we need to be higher. Of course, I put four thousand, but I think it needs to be higher. Like I said, an outrageous amount of the, uh, cases are Franklin County cases. And the other counties are paying, didn't she say four thousand?
And, uh, the average is twenty-eight hundred. I would live with that, since I was one of the lower ones.
I agree with Rick that, uh, it should be, be higher and, you know, so much that organizations volunteer. They simply want the money so that they can, uh, by, by their own rules, hire another person just so they can have more volunteers, because there's a proportionate amount of employees to volunteers. That, that four thousand dollars goes a long way in that organization. There's, uh, there's no fat on that.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about the full four thousand myself, and I was thinking about, you know, the cap also. And, and that's why I put down two. I would've put down four thousand in a heartbeat because I know they need it, because they, uh, you know, they take care of a lot of people, so. Um, the rest of the people agree on a little bit more, that's fine with me.
Now you got a majority, then if he goes four, you got three fours, so. You wanna stick with your majority deal, then that's, that's where you'd be at.
Alright, if that makes the majority four, is there a will to live with that?
So are we at four thousand?
I'm, I'm now, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with it.
You're okay with that?
It.
Roy, you're okay with four?
Yeah, they, they need it, struggle with it.
Yeah, I, I agree, they needed it. It was just, it's just that they.
First time we see where they're at.
It's just that they came in the first time and, and like, trying to, to make sure that we stayed underneath of that lid. I mean, we didn't have anything to base that off of in the past. That's where I had a problem, I guess.
Their, their information was not attached to your agenda. And I remember it was just because the amount of information that we gave you at that meeting was so large, we couldn't attach it all to the agenda, so it was, it's not attached to the agenda. attach it all to the agenda, so it was, it's not attached to the agenda.
All right.
So we're at four thousand?
Yeah, four thousand on that one.
Let me go over these really fast so you guys can look at your chart and you can make sure this is what we, where we're all at. I have the Historical Society at seventy-one thousand, at Prairie Paws Animal Shelter at forty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six. COF at ninety-five thousand, um, Franklin County Conservation District at forty-five. F C D C at sixty-four, three seventy-five. Agricultural Society at seventeen thousand, two hundred and ten. Elizabeth Layton Center at seven, a hundred and seventy-two thousand, three hundred and thirteen. Um, Services for the Elderly at one ninety-nine and CASA at four thousand.
A- and you had the sixty-four, three seventy-five for F C Ds?
That's what the seventeen amount was.
Okay, alright.
Is that what?
Yeah, it's ten dollars higher than what's on this chart. That's why I just making sure it's with seventy-five, okay.
That is approximately three thousand dollars higher than the majority vote, which puts. What does that put us percentage wise above last year?
Well, it's gonna be real close to, uh, what the average was. I don't see the percent on there.
And it's gonna be well under a percent, so.
Yep. It's like point eight.
Alright, that keeps us at the end of the envelope of what our projected uh, amount would be. Do we need a vote here to finalize this?
Yep.
You requesting that? Alright.
I think we're ready to lock it in, aren't we?
Alright. So is there a, uh, vote to approve the community partners funding for two thousand eighteen using the, uh, numbers we just came up with and the clerk read back?
I make a motion, we, uh, fund the community partners for twenty eighteen at the numbers that Janet just confirmed and read off.
Second.
Commissioner Oglesby?
I want to abstain from the COF portion of the funding due to a conflict and I vote yes for the rest.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Chair Weymer?
Yes.
That brings us to staff reports. Derek?
Yes. As I mentioned earlier, um, we have been having our individual budget meetings, um, myself and Janet and Joy and, and we've met with about half of the department heads. Uh, the rest are scheduled for this week, um. We went into this and the management summary a little bit, but i- it's gonna be an interesting year budget wise, um. We got a pay plan in place whereby it is our goal to give merit increases of two point five percent each year. Provided that that's warranted. Um, obviously, when you've got a tax lid at one point five percent or in that area, it's gonna make it difficult. And, and I don't want to go into the nuances of the tax lid and I'm greatly oversimplifying it because our valuations will likely increase, so. I, I think this year, my hope is that it's doable, but it's, I mean, we are asking our department heads and our elected officials to basically stay as flat as possible because even if you're exempt from a tax lid, you're not exempt from a mill levy. And so if we're gonna continue to give our employees raises, these are things we have to keep in mind, so, um. Thus far, they're going well. I think everyone has kind of bought into the needs of the organization and what's best for our constituents. And my hope is that we'll get through them this week and hopefully have, uh, some pretty good numbers for the board, so, um. But certainly if you have any questions about any of that, don't hesitate to ask. Obviously, these meetings will be coming before the board here in the upcoming weeks or months, so. Uh, you won't, you know, you'll have all of this information at your disposal, um. When Nick was giving his report, um, and I want to draw particular attention to something he said. Um, Nick has been very short on staffing for quite a while now, um. And I want to commend him for, uh, when he's been short on staffing, he hasn't come to you guys and said, I need more people, I need more this. Him, Darren and Christie, which are the top three people in his organization, have gotten on trucks and have worked shifts. And, and I, I cannot commend him enough for doing that because that's, I mean, I think that's true leadership. And I think it sets a great example for the entire organization, so. Um, I, I could not be happier for him that he's finally full staffed because I know not only him, but again, Darren Hall and Christie Hilliker have been working very hard over there. And they provide a very important service, so I certainly wanted to point that out. Um, and then finally, our finance officer posting is closing this Friday. Um, I, I've talked to Joy, I've talked to Gala, um, I think we're gonna sit down and once it closes and we're gonna go over the applications. See what we have, um. Certainly, uh, you guys let me know to what extent you, uh, you know, if a couple of you want to go over those applications as well and the five of us sit, that's certainly fine with me. Um, really looking for feedback from you there, so.
Be good to, um, I think this is the person more or less we would come up, I mean, obviously there's some day, day-to-day operational things that they would do and that's a big part of their job, but, uh, working with them on the budget, if we, uh, have a priority, say we really want to make, uh, servicing this, this piece of debt that we want to bond something with fit in our budget, you know, that's the person we're gonna,
we're, we're going to, so interact with, so, uh,
I think it's, uh, appropriate, we, we send a representative or two for, to, to sit in.
Well, and make no mistake, I, this is just to vet the applications. I will also want a couple of board members on the interview.
On the interview, sure.
Which, the committee vetting the applications and the interview panel are likely gonna look very, very similar, um, but we'll probably make a couple changes, um. But, but I do think it's appropriate, uh, given the importance of the position, that, um, you know, I, I don't want to quorum, obviously. I don't want to have to notice up a meeting in order to do it, but, um, I think a couple of you, uh, would be a good idea.
Chair, everyone, if, if, um, if Derek and Joy and Gala look through the applicants and have a trouble narrowing it down, I mean, if there's a clear cut at three, four or five or whatever it is that you feel like, I'm okay with that. If not, I would be a one to volunteer to help look at the applicants to either, you know, maybe say, hey, is this one really one or worth it or not worth it or whatever, just offer to do that. Otherwise, I would trust them to cut, to make the cut line and say, this is where we're at, but.
Do we have any other volunteers? Why don't you do it? You're, uh, familiar with city government and finances?
I see how that's going down, so.
You need a motion to that?
Is this like bringing lunch at the Supreme Court level?
Yeah.
So, uh.
Okay, so Commissioner Oglesby will, okay, is there, um, anyone else who's interested? We don't need to have two, but certainly, um.
Well, two would keep you out of, uh, you know, uh, out of trouble as far as needing to publish and serial communication, all that, so. Alright.
One other question on your meetings with your department heads. What, what percent of the staff under departments are meeting the merit pay? I mean, is it a hundred percent or is there some that, no, we don't?
I don't have those figures, but it's, it's the vast, vast majority of them.
I just wondered if, how, how, I didn't want it to be an automatic thing.
Yeah.
And that it was actually a meaningful dialogue and going on and hopefully causing people to, you know, look at themselves and what they can do to better themselves in their position.
Well, a- and that's one of the great challenges, um, I know that as administrator and human resources, we face not all departments take evaluations seriously and not all of them view them as, um, and, and we've tried to attach the performance increases to the evaluations and we've seen some improvement, but we're nowhere near where we need to be in terms of, you know, as county counselor, performance evaluations are extremely important to me. Because if you give an employee a nominal, you know, five out of five in every category because he's your buddy, well, and then he turns around and ends up really screwing up and, and it might warrant a termination, then I have to overcome years' worth of five out of five evaluations that say he does everything perfectly. And that's difficult to do, so, um. But yeah, I, I think, Randy, generally, um, I have seen a couple where the increase wasn't, um, given automatically where say it was extended for a period of six months pending improvement, but, uh.
Okay. I want to, are we done with that?
Yeah, we're still on staff reports. We'll come back to Commissioner's comments.
Something on Derek's staff report talking about Nick's, uh, staffing. I don't want to bring this up now for a discussion, but I think it needs to be discussed later on. Um, years ago, the city and county entered into a contract to put one of their trucks on at Nick's location and one of our vehicles or ambulances or at the fire department. I think we need to look in to see if that's the best thing for, for our services right now. I think we need to see if, uh, Nick could operate more efficient if all his people were at his building. Or whether this is an advantage to have them like it was years ago and, uh, and look at that. I brought it up with Nick and haven't really discussed a lot, but I think it's something we need to look at. And see if he could not possibly operate more efficient if, uh, all his people were at his, his location.
Okay, very good.
You done?
Staff reports? Yeah, I have nothing else at this time.
Alright, Sheriff?
Commissioner, I'm very sensitive to your time and I, you guys have been working hard, so I don't want to belabor this here any longer than we have to. Uh, but I haven't been here for a couple of weeks, so I wanted to let you know, uh, kind of a few things where we are. The, um, upgrade type stuff that we were doing in the dispatch center is, is complete. And, um, invite any of you to come in, um, to, to look at that and to see where we are. Um, our staff, uh, did the work on the painting, the, and, uh, the carpet, maintenance helped out with ceiling tiles. And, uh, and then we did, um, upgrade to different consoles, um, in there. That was paid for out of nine-one-one tax funds, um, which was a, it's a unauthorized purchase of that. It looks like a completely different facility in there and just to let you know, that's where we are. Um, as you know, last week, there was an incident at Ottawa High School. Um, we assisted the police department in, in that response. Um, I want to, I'm, I'm pleased with how everything went there, but I want to really kind of brag a little bit to you guys about our dispatch center. Um, we are a backup center for nine-one-one services for some surrounding counties. At the same time that this incident was going on and we knew that it had the potential to go real bad, we activated our recall system so we could get some extra staff in there if we needed that. What we did not realize was that a neighboring county's nine-one-one lines also went down at the same time. So all of their nine-one-one calls were being routed through Franklin County Dispatch. And we were having to do a lot of extra legwork and get some things done to make sure that they had their resources, get dis- uh, get dispatched to the proper places and things like that. It went off, it, it went off without a hitch, um. It was not until well after things were done and calmed down that I even got notified that we had that happen. Because you couldn't tell. It was very fluid. The dispatch, um, center did a great job through that and they, they should be commended for that, so I want to do that. Um, also, we've been very, very busy, um, in our detective unit and patrol, but the drug unit, um, as you know, works, it's teamed up between us and the police department and we got more than thirty grams of meth off the street just last week. Um, they're, they're busy and they're constantly busy all the time, so I wanted to let you know that. And then also on another note, um, we did a, uh, thing out at Vintage Park, um, it's a Idena Senior thing where we do, uh, prints and photographs of the, of the, of the residents there. Um, do an information sheet that has like all their medical stuff and, and, uh, any type of medications or anything like that in case somebody wanders off or anything, so it's a service that we provide for them free of charge and it went off very well. And, uh, they, they were appreciative of that, so really that's all I've got unless any of you have any questions for me.
What was going on Monday night down at the River Bridge?
Um, we had an, a, uh, individual that was on the bridge that was threatening to jump, to hurt himself. Um, we have, along those lines, Commissioner, we have, uh, staff that is certified in CIT, which is, uh, crisis intervention training. We also have some, um, hostage negotiators that do crisis negotiation. And, uh, so does the police department, but we team up to help each other out because if those go on for very long or if for some reason there's a conflict between our, whoever is negotiating and that person, then we can change them out if we need to. And so, and that, that's the reason that we have our, that we have staff that's trained in, in those skills. Thank you.
It's my understanding, the reason that Stow wasn't here today is that he's bleeding Texas Road. And we will, uh, inspect the structures that Norm mentioned.
I'd just let you know that Rodney's wrapped up his audit and we've set a date for him to come before the commission. Um, I don't have that right in front of me, but it's in the next week or so that he'll be here to, um, review those audit results with you guys.
That brings us to Commissioner's comments, board reports.
I can start, um. Attended Richmond City Council meeting, actually it was on, uh, April the eleventh. And their main topic was, uh, they've had, need some repairs to their water tower and so forth. And Bartlett and West representatives were there to discuss some different options that they may have and working on that. And just talk about costs and several different things and that was, uh, the main topic of that meeting and that's all I've been two cents. Um, last Wednesday night, I went to the Wellsville City Council meeting. Uh, they are working on an ordinance that will help them, uh, code adopting new city codes in a, uh, consistent manner in which they do that. Uh, talked about their citywide cleanup, uh, they were gonna do a mailing, how much it would cost to send out a, a notification to all the residents on that. And I think that was probably pretty much, uh, the discussion there. Uh, Roy and I, yes, we went to the East Central Kansas Area Agency on aging meeting and I'll let Roy speak to most of that, but it was interesting discussion from other county commissioners about the concealed carry regulations they have from, one county is now going to require or thinking of requiring all their staff to take concealed carry class, even though they don't have to go through and follow through and get the permit, but they would at least be trained and recognized in certain situations to the counties that prohibit employees from having a gun anywhere with them or whatever else. That's one of their discussions, the agency, on what they're gonna do with their employees. Uh, they had address code policy and some other stuff, but Roy can speak to all those items.
Yeah, they're working on their personnel policy and when it comes to concealed carry and that sort of thing, it's, uh, uh, kind of a gray area on, uh, on how to, how to address it or not address it because a lot of times when they're going into sort of bad neighborhoods, uh, they don't know whether they should allow their, uh, uh, people to take intakes from clients, whether they allow them to carry guns in their purse or something like that or not. Whether it's more dangerous to carry or not to carry, so there's a gray area there and, and, uh, bringing, bringing a concealed carrier or carrying a weapon to work in their main office, whether that's should be allowed or not allowed and so, uh, they thought they need to bring in a lawyer to give them the correct answer and then uh, discussion came when a lawyer came to discuss it and the lawyers don't know what, what the right answer is too. Probably the sheriffs were probably kind of confused too on what's, what the exact right answer is to concealed carry, so they kind of left it at that, so.
Lot, lot of discussion over what the law changes as what can you really limit your. Lot, lot of discussion over what the law changes, as what can you really limit your employees to, can you tell them they can't carry? And particularly if they're driving their own vehicle somewhere, are they still allowed or not allowed, I mean, it's just, uh. You know, I'm, I'm not sure the law changes, and everybody else has to worry about complying.
We had, we had a long discussion about that, and of course, like a lot of these, uh, agencies, they're looking at, uh. Kansas, see what they're gonna do to the Senior Care Act, and the federal government also, uh, Senior Care Act on a federal level, just to see where most, all their funding comes, and. And see how that's gonna affect their funding, and, uh, of course, they want us and everybody to contact our legislator to get them. Onboard, working towards, uh, passing the Senior Care Act, and fully fund their, their organizations, so they can, uh, help the people out, out in the countryside, uh. With the full funding. And also, I went to E C A N, uh, meeting last night, and a lot of the same stuff came up about the Senior Care Act, and. Funding their programs, uh, Head Start, and, uh, a lot of their programs also, so. It was kind of a, uh, parallel meetings, uh, yesterday for me, for both, both, both organizations, cause they both need, uh. Uh, public funding to, to sustain them, and they're doing a lot of good work, uh, to the people that need, need their help, uh. So anyway, that pretty well sums up, uh, where I was at.
Haven't been here.
Alright, I attended the hospital, uh, board meeting last evening, uh, they were able to make a profit from operations last month. The E R build out should be watertight and, uh, conditionable by, uh, June. Um, they're still anticipating, uh, somewhere around October for that being complete, that project. Uh, they're pursuing using a larger hospital's purchasing agreement, uh, for some big savings on, um. Some of their consumables, and things they use, and, um, that's, that, uh, pretty well sums up the hospital. I would echo, uh, uh, what Derek said about the ambulance department, um, you know, in spite of, uh. Being the department head, you and your team of a department whose sole mission is to save lives, I mean, what's more, uh, you know, sacred than that? They're still able to, uh, use the resources they have, find ways to get it done, and they understand the reality that, uh. We're, we're not Johnson County, although close enough to just about reach out and touch them, we don't have those, uh, resources, we have to make do with what we have, and, uh, it's very commendable, so. Anyone else before we close? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
They're second.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Hey.
Joint lunch at noon?